I cannot wonder, given that we look at the 25-year flood, how it still floods that same area, what if the cost that actually protects the human race is 25 years versus a higher year? How definitely would you personally get that information at this point?
Well, it would be, it would work the same way as part of the growth, as always, in current model. It is something that we would look at doing as a scenario to run without modeling. The information is generally there. There is a balance in the workflow and what the divert channel needs to have and how the scenario is set up with the modeling is not already in place. So, it's another innovation developing now, all of it. It is something we would look at in the future.
You don't think it'd be significantly cheaper than this, pretty much, just?
The difficulty that you run into with storms is they're not, the magnitude of 50 years is not half of what a hundred-year flow is. You run into a situation where it's a percentage of the flow, but it's a material concern that you may do, which you may initially input just looking at the current storm. So, I wouldn't be able to say that you would want 25% of the cost by getting the 25-year storm. It really comes back to the rainfall, and that's probably the best slide to indicate how that comparison would work. If you looked at the rainfall for that 25-year storm, it is, I believe, an inch and a half. It was, yeah. It's only an inch and a half lower dealing with that 100-year storm. And that 24-hour sinus storm is at or above what was experienced during that July 29th and above the 100-year six-hour storm, of which is still over five and a half. So, when you're dealing with rainfall amounts and runoff, especially when you're in a saturated condition like we're modeling here, then it becomes much closer from those storms. If we were in a condition where there was a very dry previous rainfall condition, then we would see a lot more benefit from infiltration and runoff, which is potentially best because of the amount that gets soaked in the ground and that. And when you give order to soon into the storm like a 10 or 25-year storm, then that forces you to have a very great probability of it. But because of the saturated condition and the overall significant rainfall depth, it would still really be a significant improvement.
The intentionary here, Project Four, how significant is that to improve that or increase that with the other proposals you have in here? By the time you increase the size of the channel, that's the other diversion issues, is there much benefit from that area there?
There's some benefit in the fact that that allows you to reduce the size of the premise of the downstream channel. It helps to provide some storage and reduce the structure also add to the high-water block holder. So, part of providing retention also allows you to block holder smaller. There's fairly significant area in that single area that odds up and doesn't have access to drainage through block holders. One option would be to explore just utilizing the volume there, but not allow the drain itself, allowing a connection to allow part of that single drainage and support some attention volume for a storm.
But there are some, well, ill and out, but from that single to the drainage, there's some small, uh, well, personal sources.
There may be some small drainage parts of it. But the important thing, when you're dealing with it, that might happen in 2013, the amount of rain leading up to that would easily keep that type of facility full and probably overwhelmed with small heights of the drain. So, you would need to have a reliable, where the same with that facility empty or available on the storage drain that someone, unless you had some type of open channel connection or hard drainage that say it drained off in 12 hours and then ensure that it would be available. So, that's, a lot of the features like that, there's an balance that we achieve. We want to focus on a different area in terms of standing a block holder side and putting down some channel and not providing attention. What I try to focus on is utilizing things that can be placed and provide the most benefit of that facility.
If we were to do a lot of these changes and all that, our field, increase the block stop or something there, that really depends the next, you know, then 200 yards, if you got a fence, a tree line, that's all been chucked down anyway and just force it back to where it is. So, all of this really depends on downstream from us also getting some improvements.
There's some influence from downstream and that word with those areas to create. So, yes, maintaining an upstream channel or opening up a downstream channel, providing as much flow as many as you can, whether that be creating a wider channel or producing trees and destruction, that all will benefit you. One thing I would point out is water surface difference on that photo of flow across our pool spread. There's available flow downstream of what we've utilized just with that differential in the water surface you could see, the more flow to the flow on downstream, it did. So, that would be, you may not fully realize all the benefits, but it would be substantial for this flow.
Additional questions, Council?
Thank you, very good. Glad to make your, appreciate it.
Returning to our agenda, I have three comments input.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Kaylin, did you have something? Let Kaylin go.
Kaylin Munn, I'm from Bethany College. Just wanted to share my thanks to this city council as well as the other boards that participated with Bethany College for being here on January 21st. Wonderful conversation and collaborative discussion amongst that group with Sunstrom. As well as hosting and having a city conversation just last Thursday with the college, allowing us to participate in that as well. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, along with you as city council as well as everyone that's listening to us, that as we enter into this time of year, and the following week, soon to be honest, we will, anyone ever could come and celebrate with us in the inside festival we are, starting on Saturday, March 28th, although maybe we will all win Sunday people today. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I can't stand, sorry. I'm feeling a little bit tired. I can't stand because I have a stroke from years ago, very disabled. President Biden had a critical headache, President Biden had to lay down in the aisle, not to sit down, couldn't even sit down, lay down in an aisle of scots and all of that. I mean, it's ridiculous. Is this?
That was before you, still on, you grabbed the mic.
I'm sorry.
No, but it said I must.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm disabled, I don't move well. I've had, not only can I sit down, but can actually lay down in the aisle of scots and all of that because I can't stand, can't tolerate standing anymore. Sometimes I have to sit down just to urinate because I cannot stand there that long. It's horrid, it really is bad. And I would have had to go to the emergency room on Friday to get additional pain medication because I used up my pain meds two days early with the condition of my, of my pain doctors. But that additional pain was caused by not being able to live in my house. You know, water began. This is the clothes I wear, nine layers on top, two sets of long underwear, jeans, two socks, two layers of socks on the bottom, to do the two mile, approximately two mile round trip when it's zero degrees with wind chill outside to feed and water my cats at night. And then the daytime too, sometimes I feel that cold. Where I lived, who cares about water, really? It was easy for me. I liked it. I did work there. And I worked a lot. I can show you things, but anyway, I just, you know, this histrionic, to use Chief Bertrand's term when describing, this histrionic person called him up, histrionic junkie is my word, she's a junkie. She started calling at 11:50 at night, told him all sorts of lies. And when I mentioned that to him, you know, a couple of weeks later, he said, "Well, that doesn't change the fact that you don't have water." And what I should have said was, "That doesn't change the fact that you have known for years, Chief Bertrand, because I told you," and then sworn, signed, notarized statements about Joe Hall's illegal activities. I stated that I don't have water at number nine. He's known it for years. And I have a bill to present to you all, because when the police officer, Officer Bartlett showed up to kick me out of my house, give me one hour's notice to get out of my house that I've lived there for 15 years with no warning, no nothing, his only assignment, I'm sure, was to post this on my door. He didn't even bring tape. "Oh, I'll just borrow it from the guy who kicked me out of this house, he won't, he won't find." So, tape, four pieces of tape, 25 bucks a piece, that's $100. And then it kept falling down, falling down, falling down. And he filled it for something else one day. He said, "No, if you don't have that up there, I can, you can get arrested." So, he's supposed to be going to arrest me because he does a crappy job with tape. I really think that you should have a minimum IQ requirement for a municipal police officer. They should be able to use tape. And then when he got tape out of his car, out of the trunk of his car, what did he do with the tape that was on the notice? He just littered my, my porch with that. And there's one piece, there's two pieces. I think he doesn't respect his job, he doesn't respect me. And I can only prove two pieces of tape that he littered. There were two more under, under my deck, but I didn't feel like, it's difficult for me to crawl under someplace with a camera. So, a bill for $100 for each piece of tape he littered for a total of $300. I guess I'll present this to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, very much.
You know, and the, I'd like to live there. This has caused me great, great, great physical pain. I mean, shearing pain. And so, what if I don't have water? It doesn't, I'm a, I've lived in tents at least four months of my life, you know, in one voice staff or another. It's easy. And Adult Protective Services of Department of Children and Families has tried to pay the bill to Joe Hall that I do not owe, because they won't give them anything written, won't give them a bill for them to pay. And this all started right before my stroke, in October, September, October of 2010, where Joe Hall sent me a patently illegal bill, where he was charging a deposit on the water meter. You cannot do that, and it's illegal, expressly illegal. Plus, he's also charging more for the water from the city charges him. Again, expressly illegal. And so, anyway, while I'm in a hospital trying to learn how to walk again, I don't even know if he's gotten that hard in my therapy, my friend Chris comes down and says, "Hall's cut off the water." He took out the water meter while I'm in a hospital trying to learn to walk. And remember that Joe Hall, that was originally thought, because 49-years-old, is pretty young, just stroke. It was thought by the police, by family, that Joe Hall's had hit me in the head with something. He was conveniently in the McPherson County Jail that night, I'll tell him, who knows what. But he has, you know, nearly beat his wife to death that one day, so we're at the hearing date because of it.
Nelson, we need to stick to the point of what you're, what are you asking us for today? Have you presented us with a bill that we can, you know, talk about or you'll get a response for on that? I guess if you get to your point and without the accusations of the information that are not truly, you know, factual at this point, I would appreciate, give us your points and be glad to take them into the council and add it into the business.
I understand. I, once again, Joe Hall's has been, been told that the bill would be paid, he refuses to provide the information. Attempts have been made. It's where I live, it's where I get work done. You know, I've been told by police officers that you cannot work in any place in Linsburg that does not have a working toilet, which I guess would include patrol cars. Anyway, I'm asking that I be able to stay there because this has cost me money that I don't have. I get $733 a month social security and $94 a month in food stamps, and that's, I barely make it through on that, if I make it through at all. And low-income housing in Linsburg, it took a full month, a month and four days, I think, to move into low-income housing. You can't just move somewhere. And that's $134 a month, and I don't have the money. I don't know what I'm going to do. It's $154 a month for two months, and then $153 a month for one month for the security clause. I don't know where I'll get the money. My family doesn't exist. You know, dear old dad, a friend put me up in the...
Nelson, I'm going to ask you again, I mean, I understand.
I'm just saying that there's no place to give my income.
I understand, I have issues, and those are things that are outside, but this council can't do.
Well, and the council could move to rescind our order and allow me to stay in my home of 15 years. And I'm working hard to get out of there, believe me. But I can't afford where I, where I would have to move to in this town, I just can't afford it. I have no money. And it does not bother me to not have water. In fact, staying at the motel, it is, my place, no water, is far more sanitary than that place. Like, a couple nights ago, I dropped a whole bunch of mayonnaise on the already soiled carpet. You can't clean mayonnaise off of a long carpet. It's the, whatever terms are there, just festering forever, you know? And my place is far more sanitary than that.
So, your request, Nelson, is that you're requesting this council to rethink?
To allow me to live in 523 South First Street, number nine.
And the response, I guess, I'm going to give without Chief Greg's inter, those decisions have been made based on ordinance that we have in place already, and the actions have been taken for that. Unless there's something that our attorney can tell me is different than that, that we need to be looking at.
I don't know.
I don't feel that there's any possibilities of a change for that based on the ordinance that we're in place today, which are based on sound decisions that have been made in the past for running water sanitary conditions of those kind of things.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is record your concern and the amendments that you've been making and that, and again, unless the bill tells me something different today, I don't feel that there's a lot of change or anything to...
I don't know the actual law, the structure of the government, whether...
Based on the attorney's information he just gave me today, he's not based, he's not aware of anything that would change that decision that has been made in the past. Some of those decisions sound like they're between you and your landlord, you know, and your street board, or, you know, your space board, whatever that is, the person that has a lot and all of that, and those are things that are outside our jurisdiction, so...
Just, once again, wondering if there is any way that exceptions can be made to an ordinance. I mean, essentially, you all could pass a new ordinance allowing, the same ordinance, but allowing an exception for me. That is, that I know you can do, and I'd love it if you would do that, because I guess we're...
I think today where we're at, Nelson, is that the ordinance was passed, it was in place, and the decision had been made based on those ordinances.
Okay, well, perhaps you might want to ask Chief Bertrand why he's known for years, because I told him, takes, takes that I didn't have water, why he didn't do anything about it.
The decision has been made, Nelson, based on the ordinance that we're...
Well, just thinking, you know, in terms of administration, it might be good to understand why he chooses to enforce some things sometimes and not other things all the time. You know, I told him of someone who doesn't have a working toilet in their workplace.
Nelson, there are all things you can bring to Chief for a House of Right. You know, at this point, what we've heard, what your request was, you've given us, we enter this as a bill that we pass on to appropriate actions, you know, whether it's pink or not or whatever it is, those are all decisions that will come elsewhere, so...
Now, would anyone else, anyone like to, seriously, you know where I live, just send a check, because I can't afford to live in this low-income housing at all. I can't afford it. Just throwing that out, in case you feel frisky one night and you got a checkbook out, if you'll forget now.
All right, thank you, Nelson. Anybody else for public input today? Item number four, amendments to the agenda.
Need to remove Resolution 02, Debs 15 regarding local elections. Senate has already taken action on that bill at this time. I will say that our local senator, Rick Wilborn, voted against the bill, but it has been passed by the Senate, a 2018 vote, and we'll go to the House.
What was passed exactly, what asked?
What was passed is the local elections would be moved to November of, excuse me, even number of years, and that each municipality would have the option of whether the elections would be partisan or not.
And what was the provision about special elections?
Oh, that there would be no, any, any special elections or bond issued elections would have to be during a regularly scheduled election, meaning August primary time or November general election.
Do you wish this council, any statements to the House or to the other issue?
I've already reached out to our local representatives, been asked to not support the bill.
Okay. The ladies not so on their part?
Yes. I'm just curious why the resolution, was the resolution specific to the Senate? Yes. Trying to find it here.
No, whole rule here, because elections are governed by just state, state, or...
Like governed by just state, yeah.
All right, removing item five under Administration and Finance. That all, thank you. Approval amendments from Jan-February 2nd, 2015. What is your desire?
The move we accept, second amendment is presented.
Been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed. Mayor's report, I would like to echo also the thanks for the attending of the meetings, and thanks to Bethany College for putting on, gathering the partners together to talk. I thought it was a great meeting that day, and the follow-up from that was the housing meeting last week, and those in attendance there, some action plans, and some other things will be coming from those. Both of those meetings, I hope, in the near future. We have one appointment tonight for EMT. She, do you want to talk about that?
I can.
Do you want a copy of any letter or anything you sent you chief?
I have here. Sherry Barron, she's from Salina. She's already a certified EMT. Currently, she volunteered for another community while she studies for paramedic. However, that community doesn't have as many runs as we do, and we're a lot closer, so she would like to train with the ambulance service here and serve while she studies for paramedic.
Okay.
Is she here tonight, chief? She was asked to attend if she could, but...
Is that her now?
I'll see her here.
Make a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Question, where's she, it's always, she does a rotation, is that, is she going to come down and stay for eight hours at a time, living in Salina? We should not go to the, be on call and then drive back and forth between each?
Yeah, she would, she would be on call, she would stay here to safety center for her ownership.
Okay, so just like her to stay?
Two times a week.
Okay.
Any other questions? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Motion for Gary.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to have a seat, and thank you very much for helping me break physical pain.
Thank you, Nelson, for speaking. March meetings is this recent meeting?
Yeah, committee meetings, 24th and 26th, not the 17th.
Meeting change, 24th to the 26th, on the 17th, 19th, that's in the report.
What is that?
Committees for this month, March?
Oh, 24th, 26th?
Yeah, 24th and 26th.
You know, sorry, I was, I just dropped, sorry, yeah.
Okay, March meetings this month, on the 24th, will be Administration and Finance and Utilities, and on the 26th, will be Streets and Parks and Public Safety. Same times. For those that wish to join us for the public, that's 6:30 a.m.
Don't all come at once.
Any others that I don't, any others for my own reports, so let's go planning and zoning. Anything, Gary? Planning, zoning, anything you want to say?
Uh, no comments are in the minutes, no action was taken.
Committee reports, Administration and Finance.
First item is the job description about the assistant manager position for the J O. We actually discussed this in January a little bit, and it was tabled based upon the need for more information that council had requested in the December committee meeting that was not provided for in January. And I believe that this was addressed at this committee meeting this month, and the information is before you. Currently, as you well know, our current manager, that we had a high-income position, since this was brought before committee this past month, and so we are looking at what we do as in the ahead. We have felt that it was necessary to hire a half-time individual to provide some type of support to the management at this time frame. This would probably vary depending on how we would be hired, as we all have a different skill set. But right now, as I see it, this would be a person that would help us schedule meeting events. This individual would be responsible for helping to schedule staff, for helping with payroll, for looking at answering the phone, possibly as the manager's not there, possibly running meeting events or smaller events where we don't necessarily have the manager to be in attendance, thus giving the manager a little bit more flexibility and probably not such monumental power as that we had experienced in the past. And so, I think what I want, what we're requesting tonight is that this is approved as a job description, that we could go ahead and begin to look at this position. We have not currently done anything to decide what pay would be for this position, we're just simply asking that it should prove that this is necessary and that this description is suitable for this position. All right, and after discussion, it is moved forward to this council to approve this job description.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion, is your second?
I second it.
Moved and seconded, further discussion on the J O Subservice System Manager Job Description.
Is this something that you anticipate maybe filling before we fill the director position? Or wait till we get a director in there, let the director help hire this person, or what kind of timeframe are you looking at here?
Ideally, I think it would be a good idea, idea that management be in place to hire this position, but I'm not sure that that would be necessarily the way that it is, just simply because we have to have someone that's able to fill in. Currently, and we have an individual who is working contractually for us, and so council helps to determine how we want to meet ahead. This is an individual that actually proposed to us that she do this contractually before we ever opened, and at the time, it was not something we thought we wanted to do. And she came back to me probably two months ago with a proposal and talking about this again, and we had tabled it, knowing at the time that we didn't have a need for it, but as you do know, I did contact her and talked to her about the potential of... as you do know, I did contact her and talked to her about the potential of working for us at least for this period of time, so we make a change. She actually started today and is working currently on paperwork flow and giving events. We have six events currently scheduled in the month of April and so she's working on those events as well as the wedding events for the summer, making sure that things are in place so that we can proceed and just have smooth flowing workings at the same time.
And is this person, has this person proposed the contractual agreement as the manager? I mean, was that what her original?
Yes.
So is this person a candidate to be the manager?
I think very possibly is.
Because I, like Rick, that's my question, do we want to seek hire an assistant to a manager before a manager is in place? That seems backwards to me. Understanding the need to have someone to work, I would.
I think one of the things I really do want to be clear to council about, it puts us in a very, I wouldn't say tight, I'm not sure that's the words I want, but it's very difficult to staff that when we have someone who leaves and we don't know much notice. It's made like last couple of weeks insanely busy and we've gotten through them because the employees have stepped up to the plate and they've helped out. Central staff has stepped up to the plate and they've helped out. I cannot ask for that help from within my own organization or from within who hired at least some people like that with us. But that being said, there are times of year I could not do this. And I think that it's a good idea for us to always have another person in place that is able to step up to the plate and has the capability of knowing a lot of what goes on in that building and can learn some things, or at least attempt to help.
But you're not suggesting yet this person or, or another hire would be specified as the person who would go out to seek whatever you would call it?
Sales.
Sales. Right, you know, one of the things that was asked for by council was that I brought to you a sales plan and you have that in front of you. You know, I'll be very, very honest with you, the things that were set forth that were going to be happening in January and February, even before that, as far as follow-up proposals, were not happening, sales calls were not happening. What we've had happen has been based solely upon my going out and making sales calls and it's been based upon people that call us and contact us and pursue what they've contacted us about. So we have to have someone that is capable of sales. Now, as I talked to the committee earlier this, this past month, when I committed to my job, I committed on a set of skills that previous people did not have. And so Tricia and I have been able to divide things up and it works very well for us. If I were to leave, hit my bus, whatever, let's face facts, the next person's not going to have the same skill set. It would be my desire at this time that the person who is in management have the ability to go out and make sales calls, but we might find out that someone who's hired as an assistant is much better at it. I mean, that's just the reality. And so I think that as we move ahead, we need to look at the skills that we need and we need to focus on these positions when people are very competent.
But at the moment, you're not specifying it would be one position or the other?
Not necessarily. No, I am not.
Do you, the, these positions, are they being currently advertised?
I have, we are not advertising these positions. This position, I don't feel like we can advertise until council approves that we can even go ahead and.
And so we already had a job description in place for the?
With the management, yes, we do.
And then this is, so what we are voting on tonight is the assistant position. And once we have, if we do pass that tonight, when we have these two job descriptions, will we go forward then by way of both of these?
We have actually been pursuing people that have contacted us. I've actually had four contacts made. And so far, they've resulted in people that look at the job description. I have only the visual votes as far as asking to meet with me and interview and they have denied the position since they were talked about them. One of the individuals has not responded back to me with any type of contact, so I have pressed on our job description. So we have been pursuing within letters come to us and we have not formally advertised this position.
Is there anything more that you need from council other than passing this?
Do you know?
Right.
Just to clarify, you mentioned that the hiring of an assistant would reduce the number of hours that you were not to imply in assuming that, that that would suddenly make the manager's position a forty-hour week.
And I've been very clear about that to people that have contacted me about the position. It's not, it's not what it is.
So with the approval of the job description, does the permission to seek to fill that position automatically follow? Because I can, I, I, I really hear what you're saying, as a matter of fact, I hear it so clearly that if you hire an assistant that has the skill set that you were seeking in a manager and then you find a manager that possesses similar skill sets, you're back in the same position if they're both strong in sales or if they're both strong in organization. And you've already outlined the fact that there have not been a wealth of applicants, so it's not like you can cherry pick. So I, I'm so concerned about putting an assistant in place before a manager is in place. This is a contract position. I understand the contract position now, so is this, so maybe I, there's.
Okay, how we're approaching it right now is we do have an individual in a contract position. We've had some interest of a manager as an employee of the city. But as Holly has said, when they look at the job description, the expectations, it's not as glamorous as they maybe imagined it would be. And, and we're really kind of from the manager standpoint because the individual that's in the contract position has come with incredibly exceptional references. So we're giving that individual the opportunity, kind of make or break the opportunity to be that, that manager. At the same time, that doesn't mean we're not looking for a manager. But we're not in that position where we just have to hire somebody today. And with the assistant position, ideally, we would like to have a, an individual, a set individual in that manager position. But can necessarily that's going to, going to happen. It comes out a little bit of necessity of when that assistant position gets hired.
And we have to be great and I have to be very clear with you also that we rapidly begin to pick up events as the spring hits. I believe this summer, we have three weekends, that's all, but we do not have events currently scheduled and I believe a lot of this will be scheduled, that people will be in this week. And some of those are difficult. And so as we look at that, I mean, it's a large letting semester and so with the attorneys and the large event, we have to be prepared for that, which means we start preparing now, which is in our job, right, we're preparing early.
I, I can see why the idea of hiring an assistant after a manager is there would be ideal, but it's, in the long-term, it's not sustainable anyway. I mean, you don't know what the, you know, hiring or, you know, how long or even when you can be employed, so that would be in flux anyway as far as potential managers or assistants, I think continually. And you're not always going to get one looking for the other, but I do think that having somebody there with a clear set of skills that you're looking for is a good thing to have and I like that I see here. And a lot of it is independent of what is on the other job description. So somebody who could do this could get worse.
And I do believe that good people continue to adapt.
Yes.
When I started my doctorate, I spent here twice as long for the twice as long as I have. We've adapted and we look for a lot of elements.
Additional questions?
Let me ask quickly, how long do we anticipate in this trial period of the manager? Do you have any timeframe in mind or? I said timeframe now.
You mean the contract person?
Yes.
I think this is something that as we have begun discussions with her about the proposal, we think this will have to be brought before council because this is something that we have not discussed in the past. This was to be a city hire position and that was the intention. And so as we look at it differently, I have to be very clear with her the expectations and to allow the hire to look up. And Greg and I have discussed many of these things and we've gone back and forth and some things that I still don't have final copy.
The purpose of that question was if it is somewhat open-ended, I don't feel like we should wait too much longer to provide assistance over there because every day we're not, we're not making sales calls, which means there are potential meetings going somewhere else, so that was.
All right, additional discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Next item is downtown, town district. And we had, was it three?
Yes, three proposals.
And they were, I have my office here, lots of variation members. Lots of discussion in council, it's, Greg, help me with this, were we going to go back and ask for some clarification?
Well, on Hopps Sound and Electric, they submitted the bid with twenty-four speakers and went back to them and asked what it was twelve and I'm looking at my note here and then we cut off half of it, the half that it cut off was the price, but.
I know.
But speaking with Brian Hopps, he said that basically just take that, that number of seven thousand and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, cut it half, which is what, thirty-nine or thirty-five, thirty-nine, somewhere in there, approximately thirty-nine, I'm sorry, thirty-five, forty, subtract that from the price, which would put that at about thirteen-seven approximately, I'm doing the math in my head. We did talk a little bit about going back, question about quality of Bogan system versus From a sound quality standpoint, the JBL speakers are providing better quality sound. The Bogan are more public address type speakers. The, but actually, when you look at the proposal, I mean, if you look at, Wilson Electric was the lowest, had the lowest proposing price, they also had the Bogan speakers, that was fourteen thousand dollars, but a Hopps Sound and Electric with only twelve speakers, that puts them at roughly thirteen-seven, so they would be the lowest commercial sale, was the highest of the proposals, at seventeen thousand.
And so the, and this is a, this is my mini budget and we don't know how we're going to pay for it. But as I understand it in our discussion was we need to approve, this is what we are saying, and go along those polls and it's going to cost approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Yes.
And then we will go from there, working with Ad Hop, working with whomever to come together and figure out a way this could be bought. So this is not encumbering money, we are just approving?
Selecting a proposal.
Selecting a proposal. And then, am I right?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Because it is a non-budgeted expenditure.
Right.
It's actually not an expenditure that we're talking about.
That's a good point. I stand corrected.
Well, I was one of those who was concerned about apples to oranges, if you will, and I did some looking into these also. I feel, I feel that this amplifier and the speakers are superior to the Bogan ones, but I'm also concerned about the fact that if he thought we needed twenty-five, we just arbitrarily say, let's go to fifteen or whatever it is, that it won't get the results that he wanted, so.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's the results he wanted.
Yeah.
But it was what we asked for.
Yes.
He gave us more than what we asked for.
Right, right. Well, I think it's good and I think this quality of this equipment is better, period.
Help me understand why, when this would be used for the most part? Best in what?
Day.
Background. There was used to be.
Kind of, kind of.
And besides, why it's music?
Why they national?
DJ of the day.
Pouring, pouring.
Your drive time.
It's not a free course.
At least only for five hour drive time. Or five minutes, I will take requests.
This goes out to. You really made your question answered, didn't you? I'm guessing it is Swedish music anymore?
Not necessary.
Well, I mean, there are plenty of other possibilities.
Well, I did, I heard one idea that was thrown out is maybe a committee comes, is put together, comes together and kind of sets up parameters of what should be light and when, et cetera. What's acceptable, what's unacceptable.
In the same way, we would like this, this visual noise, we have a commitment to that as far as signs. Yeah.
So we're going to approve something that we don't have the budget and we don't know how we're going to pay for it and we don't know when it'll be installed, but we need to approve it?
It's not to approve the proposal.
We need to approve a proposal to say this is a beginning. This is where it is.
This is what we want to go back on it.
And we know that it can be, because these will be attached to the light poles. Okay. It can be attached, this is the procedure, this is all the, the wiring, all of those kinds of things. This is, so this plan is in place, but it is not painful.
Okay. Do, do you recall a discussion a couple of years ago, it had to do with licensing and having to pay a fee to broadcast music in a public place? It was a pretty good discussion with council and where does that fit into this?
We already paid an annual ASCAP fee.
We do.
Yeah, I can't remember what ASCAP stands for, but they give that every time. Really, both are doctors and lawyers.
Okay, so that's not an issue anymore then because we pay that fee.
Well, this falls under that licensing umbrella.
Okay.
I mean, without doubt, but even if we don't know what the letters that have.
Oh, it's not what you said.
No, it is.
Oh, okay.
Others.
So the direction of, the inclusion of microphones.
Yeah. So it would also be used to give direction on days when there are festivals and lots of things going on, that sort of thing.
Or emergencies.
So the amount of speakers is important because we want everybody, not just here in the circle to hear, but.
It's one hundred, right, one hundred north and south.
Right.
People looking to tie in at the south west corner of the stadium area.
If the poles that have been ordered, the light poles have been ordered, will have mounting brackets for this equipment, correct? No, they will have holes for mounting brackets. Now, that, that was, I kind of got into the wrong part of the question there. The mounting brackets for the specific equipment that will go on hold will match up. They'll, they'll make sure that. What was included in the request for proposals was also a spec sheet of poles showing where the holes would be to be able to, for the speaker wire to come out and also to how the bracket could be mounted, yes. If I still want to get down, down the road and this proposal finally takes wins and gets money and gets done, then all of a sudden, the holes are not right there in a place. So.
Read your claim.
Well, that's what I want to try to.
Sit there straight.
Yeah, and brackets racks and all that kind of stuff. Part of the reason I brought this up was that I thought I read somewhere in the downtown sidewalk deal about poles that are coming in and that we kind of missed the boat or somebody missed the boat on how these poles will be mounted in the ground and there may have to be more fees or something, is that correct? Maybe you planted ether or more concrete or something. Well, that's an ongoing discussion and I, we have. Well, that's another going discussion that I, we have done it differently in other locations with the direct break pole. And I think at the end of the day, it will prevail. I think it's a structural engineer with the pole manufacturer that, I need to change the word I was going to say. Make sure that they are covering themselves from any and all liability. How's that?
Are you?
Yes.
Are we, are we running off the question here? Are you, are you digging something up there?
I mean.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm still trying to talk about make sure we got the right pole.
Let's see the motion on the table. I move that we approve Hops' proposal for $13,736 to move this project forward.
That, that sounds like we're going to pay for it. That's my mind.
No, no, we're not going to pay.
Well, I know we're not looking for that, but what you just said sounds like.
Well, the Hops proposal, then don't pay the money. But I mean, we've got to choose one of three.
Yeah.
And if there's a committee that is going to be going out there and trying to raise money, they need to know, are we raising 25,000 or are we raising 13?
So your motion is sort of approve Hops' proposal?
Second.
Move to second.
I, I would not say it in that fashion, because that makes it sound like you're agreeing to pay him the $13,500. I would, I would suggest that you, uh, accept in general the terms of Hops' proposal and continue to negotiate this with him. You're not, you're not committing to spend your money.
You're accepting, right? You're not approving the proposal with money.
No, I don't think I'd say accepting, because that's an offer to do it for a particular.
Okay, so why wouldn't we just offer a consensus for the design submitted by Hops, period?
I think that's fine.
And a committee, as we talked about, to decide, to go out there.
I'll draw my second. I'll draw my second motion. Do I do that?
Make her one through two?
Sure.
Okay. So now let's finish the discussion about the, what did you say, consensus?
Consensus. Is there a council consensus?
I guess I see you as making.
Is there a council consensus to adopt the design plan submitted by Brian Hopp?
But not to engage a contractor, or inter into a contractor.
Okay, okay.
All right, questions now, Greg, you're needing for some information to show us something about brackets.
Oh, they were given the spec sheet, all the proposals were given the spec sheet, and it says on here that, uh, not only spacing of the speaker cable, but also, um, the inserts for, um, the brackets, speaker brackets, is a guideline for proposals.
So the pole was designed specifically for an option to have a speaker location off of, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if, I would gather that there are probably also standards in for speakers for brackets that might, so.
Does that take any action then?
I mean, not really, if you're not entering into a contract, you're just scared.
Maybe forward.
Why not, why not?
Still, the general consensus is, unless I'm reading it wrong, that we are approving this. I mean, we are in favor of.
The consensus is that this should go forward. Does anybody have any concerns, and if they do, please voice that out? Consensus is that we're going to push this forward. Further information and further study and further funding. Next.
Is that right? Okay.
Please.
Um, we received three proposals for a wage and salary study. This is a budgeted amount of 15,000. The LMAG is one of the proposals that we are proposing that we accept for 9,000. The last time that a wage and salary review was during was in 2001. So it's probably time, but it is, it is a motion to approve LMAG.
Second.
For now. Isn't that moving?
Yes.
Moving, second and further discussion on the wage study. Hearing none, roll call please.
Kelly, yes. Eddie, yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Becky? Yes. Thank you. All right, we are now going to Bethany Home land purchase option. Um, we can talk about that.
Uh, yes, we've been in negotiations with, uh, Bethany Home for a period of time now. To sell the 31, approximately 31.413 acres to Bethany Home, which is located just north of the property they have, where their system living facility. In the agreement, well, in the contract for sale that you have, that was in your packet, there has been a correction, um, made on page one, that the total purchase price is $145,200. Um, there's credit of the option price 5,000, which would make the final sell price 140, at closing, $140,200 for the property. And on page five, it was just the insertion under, once I get to page five, um, under the buyer, one half of escrow fees and closing expenses. What we're asking today is just, is the approval of the option, um, for, to sell the 31.413 acres to Bethany Home. Cost of the option is $5,000. Um, it's described in exhibit A. It's a five-year option. Probably the biggest contingency in the option is as owner, the opportunity for us to find an additional 30 to 40 acres to replace the 31 that we would be selling. And with that.
So what we are voting on tonight is the option?
Optional, yes.
Option on?
Yes.
Right. That is a motion.
Well, well, you're voting to sign the option, but the option ties in with eventually the same terms of the contract. But, but you're not executing the contract at this time, but you're, you're agreeing to the option on the same terms as the contract.
How do you want to run that? What would be the best wording?
Uh, to, to, I, I think as long as you, as you agree to accept the terms of the option, you're fine. If that incorporates the contract terms again.
Thank you. Thank you, want to say that again?
Yes. Just what you said, thank you.
Third second. Third second, what Bill said?
I second what Bill said.
All right, further discussion on what Bill said.
Is that still the worst part of when that we were thinking about hotel potentially?
Yes, we still retain six, or two or three acres.
What happens theoretically, Bill, if, when this time comes for it to be negotiated again, or we've given this option, someone comes and says, I'll give you $200,000 for that land? I mean, that, we, we are bound to sell.
We have tied up with the contingency that the city has, and out if they're unable to find appropriate replacement for this. Yeah. But other than that, no, we're bound by the terms of the option.
That's fine.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Roll call please.
Becky, yes. Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Kelly? Yes.
All right, um, next. Next item is, um, a portable bar purchase.
Which we did cover in Connecticut.
Say a whole thing, and then just.
Right. I asked Holly to go ahead and put this together, in other genuine, because it came very evident from back in October that we have needed these sooner rather than later. So with that, Holly, if you would.
I did some research, and I actually, um, asked some people who knew more about bars than I did, because I think it's not very knowledgeable. And Greg had given us the list of things he felt like were important, just for us, quality of the bar, but we also had a price we felt like we needed to maintain that was reasonable. And also a footprint that we could get the bars in and out of the elevator, and actually down to the levels so we could use them in those places. It's become very clear that at large events, we didn't have enough, enough workable bar space. And also, when we were running two events, it was impossible to run with what we had in reserve. So, uh, looking ahead, this was not an amount that we actually set aside budget for that would come out of commodities line item. And we would be looking at $2,282 apiece, and we would be purchasing two bars. And that was the best price that I could find for the same bar for a total amount of $4,564. And then we have no shipping on this product.
Motion to approve the purchase.
Sorry.
Greg, do you want to?
Uh, just one correction, recommending that be funded through the Equipment Reserve Fund and not through the commodities line item. This is Larry.
Is this something that come, that is available soon? Yes, as soon as I would.
Larry, you heard that?
I would say yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second on two portable bars. Is there a further discussion?
Assuming this will increase revenues for the central building.
Well, I would, I would hope.
The idea is we'll be our service patrons quicker.
I'll say nothing of avoiding the liability that working over a low table like they had set up is going to cause an injury eventually. It's all risk. It's safer as well.
Additional discussion? Roll call please.
Um, Kelly? Yes. Betty? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Becky? Yes.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. I think that was it.
Utilities?
Uh, the first item on utilities is, um, uh, asking for us to approve a quote from CDWG for the replacement of the wastewater plant, SCADA computer. It says stated by the need to upgrade from the operating system and monitoring control that we purchased last month. So they need to do that, and again, the cost, the money would be drawn from where? Greg? Was it supplies?
I can't remember all this.
Yeah, uh, replacement parts.
Replacement parts. An amount of $989.25.
That motion?
That is a motion to approve this purchase, um, to prove the purchase as presented in this price quote.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Why aren't, does this need a 512-day-long graphics card?
Because it's very, very graphic oriented, screen system.
It actually does have like 3D graphics and.
We don't do that, no. The control screen is all graphic.
Do? Well, there's the guy.
That is just what the, um, computer program spec'd out for the computer that they, uh, they want to see.
Okay.
But that's what they recommend.
That's what they recommend, yes.
Cool.
Any further?
Any games on that?
No games.
No games on.
Additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Eddie, yes. Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Kelly? Yes.
Uh, the next item is, um, for the replacement of a, um, gas monitor for the WWTP. The present one is no longer functioning. It's required piece of equipment due to the confined space areas at the plant that are governed by OSHA and Kansas DOL regulations. The staff requests, um, a quote from air gas or saline for the purchase of the individual gas monitor, a price of $1,200. And again, um, that those funds would come from.
Base water.
Base water. Is that right?
Yeah, repair parts inventory line, but then.
Okay.
I had a typo on that, it is 1210, not 1200.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm about to present it for 12 times. Okay.
You can give me the extra ten.
As, as amended for $1,210, I so moved that we approve this purchase.
Second.
Move to second and further discussion on the $1,210 for air gas of saline for an industrial gas monitor.
That was a huge gas tester.
Does monitoring by the agents. All right. Well, you're going down the pool. Sniff it out, see what's down there.
It's monitoring and testing at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Choose your subject.
All right, any further discussion about monitoring or testing? Hearing none, roll call please.
Okay, Becky? Yes, Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Kelly? Yes.
The next item by utilities committee is the approval of, um, a study.
Say. Yes.
A study, um, for, um, the city to perhaps, um, produce some of their own electrical power. The amount would be determined how much that would be, and if it's feasible, it's really a feasibility study. But they're requesting $26,500 for this study, and, um, it will look into the future power supply and reliability, energy and capacity that can be produced. This is a budgeted item, item, uh, budgeted for $60,000, and they're requesting $26,500 at this moment. I make the motion that we approve, um, this study, um, and hope that we get some great news from it, so.
Third second?
Second.
And move to second to approve the first phase, which I think is different from the 26560, keep it on, it's its first phase of the study. Potential signs in that, uh, potential, uh, generation by our community, which probably would keep the lights on on a Super Bowl Sunday.
Thanks. So.
Questions?
We've done this most before, fairly, what, the last 10 years?
No, it was longer ago than that.
Really?
Well, maybe it was 10 years ago, 2001, 2005, so we're there.
It's just luck, I really didn't know.
A lot of this has been up to our contract. 2019 was our, wasn't our contract, we're allowed to be prepared, see what the options are.
What, what would be the timeframe on this, when they have to have this?
This first stage would be done in probably 120 to 150 days. And like I said, it would just be the first phase, depending on the outcome of the first phase. Because it's not only looking at generation, it's also looking at other potential power supply options. Uh, it's taking from a generation standpoint, taking a high-level approach, um, to determine the feasibility of installing it. And then, I want to recover part of our load, all of our load, exceed our load based upon growth, and kind of put some of the numbers together on, on what makes sense.
Further additional questions?
Yes, I am interested, since we did one approximately 10 years ago, um, and we didn't really do any, did we do anything with that that's in place today? Or because the contract was renewed, and then it terminated that whole FERC thing where we stood and, I mean, it was a whole big convoluted ball of energy.
Well, yeah, 10 years ago, um, the recommendation was to just stay with a full power supply contract. Things have changed since then.
Sure.
Um, and you mentioned FERC, they've had a couple rulings that changed the way, um, energy is. And you mentioned for, they've had a couple rulings that changed the way energy is provided and supplied. Plus, we've been experiencing over the last two years particularly, some really significant reliability issues from our supplier and the transmission system, which probably creates greater need than we had 10 years ago. Because nothing's been done in that system in 10 years. Except the last one.
Good information, thank you.
Additional questions? Harry Nunn, roll call please.
Kelly, yes. Blaine, yes. Blaine.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Eno.
Yes.
Becky, yes.
I don't go with any other for utilities. Thank you.
Streets of Parks?
First item is the repair of three structures at the golf course to include pump house, car house, and storage building. They received damage from plastic summer storms. The little bit, the recommendation is to go with our little bicycle structure, $4,575. That is a motion.
Seven.
Price is right.
Price is right. Price is right.
3575 is what's on.
It was supposed to be 47, something.
So it's a different date?
You're right.
My suggestion was 5737 and I raised 4947.
Voice is best when you're 45.
Is there a red estimate, 4575? Do you confirm that, Chris?
Because I know we were large, how close they all were, that's pretty, it's almost unusual that it isn't that close together. There's always one that's way out there.
There it is. You're right.
Thank you for telling. Somebody is listening. Somebody is listening while we're talking. We appreciate it.
It was my concern that Alan said he was really busy and he may not be able to get to it right away until two months from now. And do we want to put some kind of, if this isn't done by a certain date, we move on to another?
I'm, I'm, sorry.
Could you go up to the front, please?
Come up to the microphone for us, though.
I'm calling him after this and his group and he's hopefully going to try and meet some guys out there.
Oh, okay.
Do you think two minutes or two months?
Two days.
I talked to him this day of last week and hopefully nothing has came up for him before tonight, but I might still do what you said, but he says he's got time now with the weather being cool.
All right, motion on the floor is for $4,575 on a wise for wind damage repair on three structures at the golf course. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, roll call please.
Becky, yes. Eno.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Betty, yes. Kelly, yes.
Make the call.
He's called, he's called.
The next item is the city, my, here, city parking lot proposals. It looks like we have. The proposal was to $34,075. That would put the city hall parking lot back behind here and then the South Main Street Park, the next USP 400, $95,45. And that was to go. Okay, we're, I guess we're still waiting on a Koi construction. Have we received that?
Yes, we received that for.
Well, I didn't get the packet that long, that's why. Maybe it was, yeah, that's.
There it is, there, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I guess make a motion to go with Koi construction, total amount of $88,262. That would be the south parking lot next to USP 400, $66,202. City hall parking lot at $24,104.
That's a total of what?
$88,262 Koi construction, that is the motion.
I have both in second and discussion.
Where does the money come from?
Comes from the capital improvement reserve account. We have $45,000 budget in the balance coming from capital improvement reserve account.
Isn't that what we had a discussion about recently though? And is that fine wind blowing?
Well, it is, it's going, this won't break it down, yes.
I mean, is that a concern?
I think the need for the parking lots is created and the need to just have a money center.
Further discussion?
Becky. Koi can start when the downtown project is.
I would rather have him do it after the project's done instead of here. Because then you have two contractors, it's up to Bill's sound point at each other. It's just.
And there's data. There's data nonsense.
Yeah.
So are these, both of these codes together or supposed to be 8262 or is there some?
There's a discount for doing both of them together.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
Was the math that I.
I see out there now, I'm sorry. Yeah, the math wasn't.
Yeah.
Thanks for saying all that. Any other questions? Harry Nunn?
Kelly, yes. Betty, yes. Blaine.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Eno.
Yes.
Becky, yes.
No, there's none of the work.
Our department has budgeted $8,000 for place thermal energy camera, as I recall, is what, about 10 years old?
15, it's 15.
15 years old. And Evelyn.
Or you could be right.
Just one time when my mind was distracted. That's surprising, okay. So Chief Evelyn has identified the thermal camera that he wants and it is about $1,400 over budget. The camera that he wants has a DVR scene saver and a five year warranty, which are not available in the less expensive camera.
Actually, that's incorrect. They're extras.
Okay. They are add-ons, okay. But it was determined that by, with a little, a little moving around within their own budget that we could get to $9,000 with another $400 to be determined, but.
Emotion.
A big sale. Emotion is to approve the purchase of two wise fires, amount of $9,400 for thermal energy camera.
Is that a motion?
It is.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second and further discussion or descriptions of the need for Tim?
Can you get Netflix on this?
Sorry. Is there any concern over the additional 1,400? I mean, you figured out the thousand, I think.
A thousand out of props that could be, this could be considered props, so to speak, and $400, they would look for a line item to see if that's going to be whole or.
We can squeeze it.
Gary, stay, or stay on Larry about the 400, there don't want to be butt mess. All right, roll call please.
Becky, yes. Eno.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Betty, yes. Kelly, yes. I don't believe there's any others.
Item number nine, consideration of purchase order, our ordinance 4910.
Motion to approve, second.
Moved to second, any further discussion?
I'm looking for any concern. Rick.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Eno.
Yes.
Becky, yes. Blaine.
Yes.
Betty, yes. Kelly, yes.
Payroll, payroll ordinance 4908 and 4909, what is your desire?
So good.
Moved to second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Kelly, yes. Betty, yes. Blaine.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Eno.
Yes.
Becky, yes.
Item 11, any others? Do you remember to continue recycling, which are motion.
Happy birthday, Betty, yes.
Happy birthday, Betty.
Happy birthday, Betty.
Thank you, thank you. Motion for adjournment.
Moved to second, all those in favor of say aye? Same sign, approved.